Alabama State Board of Education Work session is now called to order. Dr. Matthews?
Thank you very much. So, we've got about 20 minutes, tops, because we want to make sure we get up there on time. I walked in last week as they were doing the first song. Because I thought I was on time, but I learned they're starting on time. Did a beautiful job last week. We had Trustful, Trustful High School Ensemble. And today, it's going to be Tuscaloosa City Schools. I think it's a city school-wide. You may know, but they come from multiple schools. Also, a chamber ensemble like last week. So, it'll be very nice. So, what I, let's look at three. I'm not even sure if we have anybody here from Jackson State today. But this is a, of course, we did last month. They, this is a pretty simple one. It's a class, well, from the college. Sorry. Dr. McCarthy can speak for Dr. White. This is approving a Class AA. So, remember, that's what we call education specialists above the master's level for elementary education. No, I don't know if there are any questions. I don't think there would be. I don't think they're here. Now, they may be here this afternoon, because we do have a lot of higher-ed folks coming in this afternoon. But they are, you see, if you look on the second page under Tab 3, Jackson State is seeking to reinstitute Class AA elementary education program. They had this program in the past. They let it lapse. So, they still kept their bachelor's program and their masters, but let this one lapse, and they would like to bring it back. So, that's what we're looking at here. Okay? So, the, then, the, the, I don't want to get into the one that's the presentation. Okay, testing requirements. That is the presentation that's coming this afternoon. Okay? So, if you look at number five, this is our reading test. And I know Denise Peacock is here, and so we can go ahead and discuss this if you like. You remember, we, last year, began the process. We, we re-looked at reading tests. And there are really two national reading tests. As Denise comes up, she can answer questions. But we decided to go with a different test. So, we were using Praxis for our basic elementary and early childhood reading test. We decided to go with a test that's administered by Pearson that is, it's actually the Massachusetts State Test. Some other states use it. I think fewer states use it than the Praxis. But the feeling was, from our team looking at it, it was more aligned to the science of reading. Whereas the Praxis test was, was a more global test. That included some science reading, but also was heavily influenced by comprehension. And so, those other skills. And not, so being careful, because there's nothing wrong with comprehension, but we wanted to see about a test that was really aligned to the science of reading and where we're pushing with the letters program and all that. So, so we chose that test. Then we had to do standard setting to see what the cut score basically would be. And that's where we are now. So, with that, turn it over to Dr. Peacock.
Yes. And we were thinking we were going in the afternoon. So, I know I have a PowerPoint queued up somewhere over here.
Yeah, we planned for you to go after, but soon you might get to leave early today.
I doubt.
Did Charles today?
Charles.
Who's up in the?
He pulled them both up, but I have no idea. Is it on the side or something?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, let's see.
Where'd that go? I think they're upstairs for me. Do you find it?
No, you don't.
Yeah.
Well, this isn't showing on. I don't want to turn off all the recordings. They might not have one.
Not everybody has a face mask.
He was going to bring a mask to me before 1:00.
Okay. Well, we may have to move on, everybody. I don't want her to try to do this without her PowerPoint. Okay, so let's hold off on that. So, let's give you the intro. That's what that's about. And we'll, we'll come back to it. They may be all upstairs setting up for the musical presentation. So, the next one, I can discuss a little bit. When the textbook committee, you know, we went through that and we voted last month. But there is one that was accidentally, I think we told you how they did it. But anyway, they're not core reading materials. These are supplemental materials. But one is accidentally left off the list essentially. And we need to add one. The vendor called us after that and, you know, wondered why they were left off. And it was just purely a clerical mistake. But if you look on the second page there, this is supplemental material. I'm sorry, under Tab 6, supplemental material. Sadlier is the vendor. I don't think they have a, they don't have a representative here today. They had many other products that were approved. But this one was left off. And you see, it was recommended. It's in the Tier 2. And I think it is a spelling book, but I'm not certain about that. And I don't, no, I think everybody was planning on being here in the afternoon. So, I don't know if we have any, if we have any questions about it. We can always come back. But again, it doesn't affect the work you've already done. It doesn't affect the, it's spelling. And it doesn't affect any core materials. And that's why I didn't worry about it much. These are supplemental materials. They can't use them for core programs, but they can purchase them to supplement their, their core programs. With that, celebratory news. I'm so excited we got our textbook bill passed finally. And with, with some fanfare, even the last week, we were still having to explain to people across the street how important it is. But because of that, we were able last week to go ahead and release those rubrics, which is great. I know you're excited about that.
Yes, I'm very excited.
It is good to get that out. And in the future, we'll be able to release them on the same day the board votes. So, that, that'll be an issue that'll be gone in the future. And there's some other really good things in there. It's going to make the processes more efficient. It opens some things up for us. Let's see if Stephen's back there now, if there's any questions. But it's been, you know, we've, we've kind of struggled with that through a couple of adoptions to try to get to the point and figure out where the pinch points were and where were the frustrations. And some of those were just in the law. So, that now is cleared up. And I think, even if we find another adoption round and we think we really would like to, there's something else in these between. We've now liked the groundwork. Legislators understand the importance of that law and how it, how it underpins all of our work and why we need those things to line up. So, so that was a big success. And we'll bring this next month. Didn't want to put it on today without having some time to explain why we're, you know, because I knew there might be, even though I sent it in the memo, why would we be adopting more textbooks? Not more textbooks, just were accidentally left off the list.
While you're mentioning, Dr. Murphy, you've done such a great job with the legislature. We've seen some major issues that none of us really knew come up.
Well, thank you.
Keeping us informed and where's the Numeracy Act? Now that you're talking about our successes.
So, the Numeracy, the Numeracy Act passed the Senate. They had a public hearing in the House yesterday. They were going to have a House committee meeting this morning at 8:30 and vote on it. And I have not, I have, no. Jessica was over there. She may be sending me messages. I don't know. I just haven't had to check on. If you don't know, I don't, I haven't told everybody. So, Jessica's grandmother had a medical emergency yesterday. She had to leave us in the middle of the day and dash to Dofin. She came back late last night, and she's here now. But at any time, might have to go back. So, so that's to say, I don't, I'm not sure exactly where she is right now. But that was up for a vote in the House Policy Committee this morning, in policy. If it came out of committee, then obviously it could be on the calendars earlier this next week. We don't know.
There it is. Nick knows.
And the calendar for, like, is always posted a day ahead. So, we don't know if it'll be on Tuesday's calendar or not. There is, there is an education bill on the calendar in the House today that relates to EL students. I mean, I know Jessica sent you several things on it. But it is on the calendar today that will make things a bit more complicated for us because, well, okay. It, it changes the way we calculate students who are English language learners on the report card. But it changes it in a way that is in opposition to federal law. So, if we follow the state law and we follow federal law, we will have to have two report cards. And this board, when Dr. Richardson was here as the interim and, and our transition, you know, he was very adamant. Thank you. Nora has made some more coffee. Anybody else would like some? Did you get some?
I did.
So, they, so y'all, some of you remember, we used to have two graduation rates. Because we had a state rate followed state law, and we had a federal rate that followed federal law. It was very confusing to people that we had students who were state graduates but not federal graduates and vice versa. So, you all were to try to rectify that and have one graduate. You're either a graduate or not a graduate. And state, federal law would marry.
We also had two report cards.
We had, we did have two report cards. And Dr. Richardson worked with y'all to try to get that together.
And Dr. Weiss before that, actually. We had it both at times.
Yes, I'm saying, period. When the ESA plan came through, there was discussion about, would we have two report cards or one report card again? And Dr. Richardson was adamant, the board supported him, that we would have one report card. We would marry the state report card and federal report card and have one report card. But as this bill passes, we won't have any choice but to go back to having two report cards because we have to follow federal law to do the federal. It's not a federal report card. I almost misspoke there. Federal law says each state shall have a report card, and these things shall be in it, measured this way. And we do that. And that's what's on our website now. Our state law says we, is the A through F report card. But the federal doesn't include the A through F. They don't care if you add that on top or not, but there's not an A through F federal requirement. But this will mean that we'll have a, we'll have a state report card that follows the legislative guidance, and we'll have a state report card that follows federal law. And it could be confusing because schools may have an 88 on one and a 92 on the other. And I explained it to somebody the other day. I said, "It's kind of like you're getting two chemistry grades, and one includes your test scores and one includes just homework." And so, it's not that either one's incorrect, but we will, you know, I think we'll have to explain that to the public. How does a high school have two scores? But we, I've had this conversation with legislators, and that's, they want to move forward with.
Have you had any cost analysis on what the department would spend in producing additional data to comply with this state law?
No, not specifically, but we have talked about it. Knowing what we spent before, it'll be upwards of probably half a million dollars. Because it, because it means rewriting. You've got new computer programs. We're going to have to hire programmers to rewrite and to maintain. It's not just a one-time thing. So, when we went to, after ESA, we had to change the report card. And that was a multimillion-dollar project. But now, we'll annually have to maintain two report cards.
Dr. Matthews, what can we do based on what Dr. Richardson did and Dr. Weiss did before to reconcile these differences? So, we have one report card. So, we report appropriately and accurately to the citizens of Alabama.
We did it. We did it. You might want to go back and see how we did it before. Sometimes it's better just to check and see how it's done in order to save a lot of time. And a lot of the data is actually collective anyway. It's just a matter of reporting. And I, as I recall, a lot of the money, it was part of the federal funding. And I assume that that would be the case this time. If the federal government requires something, they usually sort of pay for it. But I, you know, I, I don't know. But I would rather than doing what we.
Our current report card would just go forward. Because the current report card that's up there that people see when they click on school reporting, that meets all the federal guidance. That won't change. It would be creating a separate report card that basically takes out all the EL students. That's what the law does. It takes the EL students out of the calculation. And so, for some students, I'm sorry, man.
Can I, can we do something with that front? You said to click on. People don't know to click on that. Is there any way to redesign that homepage so that we take your picture and what you've written? Because it takes up a lot of space. And move it to a part where you can click on and say, you know, maybe at the top even, superintendent's message, and put what people like parents are really interested in finding out about. Because number one, it's, it is still not a user-friendly website. And number two, parents don't necessarily have a whole lot of time and maybe not even a lot of knowledge on how to use that. But if we could put something like a report card, even if it's a mini version and you click on it.
Report card.
Yeah, but put, make our, make our homepage more user-friendly and more designed for either promo, like put the squirrel's picture up there, and not saying that it's not great looking at your picture. But the problem is, you know, it, I wouldn't want mine up there. It's just, I think it's, the, well, certainly wouldn't want mine. But the, the point is that I think it needs to be designed so that if we have a report card, make it accessible. And, and, but I do think it's worth going back to what we did before because we had to figure it out. Technology's better now than it was even, you know, eight or 10 years ago. But it's worth doing that.
Right. So, our federal report card, federally required report card, just make it clear. We're not in any danger like we were before. We meet all the federal requirements. It's just that the state, if the legislature, if this goes all the way through, then we'll have a different report card, too. Some schools, if they don't have any English language learners, then their grades should be the same. But if they have English language learners, then when you remove those students out, then they won't be, the calculations will just be different. Because what you'll be doing is removing a number of students. And some schools have large proportions of English language learners. And so, when you remove them, they'll change. But we're working on that. That, that may not become law, but it is, it is on the calendar in the House today.
Dr. Matthews, would, if, there's some schools, now, these are schools, maybe not systems, but some schools have as many as 75%. So, would that mean that only the 25% are, are evaluated on the report card? It, it's a smaller sample, right? I mean, I don't know. He, he's our statistician. Dr. Reynolds would know how. I just wonder, you know, how, if it's going to misrepresent the whole if you have such a small group.
I'm worried about that, too.
So, anyway, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I haven't, I don't have enough knowledge to argue one way or the other.
That's why I ask about if you, if some consolidation need to work with the legislature or some report.
Yeah, keep us informed.
Have one. And Dr., Ms. Bell knows more about how they did it before than I do.
I didn't do it. So, the people who did it, you know, and they may not even still be in the department somewhere. But I think it's worth going back. And the reality is, and I assume the legislature understands this, when you look at the two report cards, you know, it's there regardless. Even if you remove it, it, it really does shine a big light. And I know that's the reason why. They want a spotlight on it to extract it and, yeah. But it's still there. But you could put it, you could connect it with it. And the way we did it before, it was actually easier to read. And we still met the requirements for both federal and state.
And the ESA plan requires us to do subgroups, right? So, we already, I think we do the data collection.
That's what you said. We already have. So, that's what, yeah. It's there. It's not going to be that complicated. It's really.
So, they, yeah, this, our, our report card that meets all the federal requirements under ESA, nothing changes on that. We've got that. This would just be. Okay, got it. 11:00.
We're adjourned until 12:45.
The easiest way to go up will be use this elevator. You type to the right and go straight up to the second floor. You'll be on the second floor.
I'm sorry. I should have said we will reconvene at 12:45. I'm sorry, I should have said we will reconvene at 12:45.
I want to say more of education work session is now meeting and we will start with the foundations of reading update.
And we have a PowerPoint.
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, happy to be with all of you this afternoon. Thank you for your patience with the technical difficulties this morning. But basically what I'm going to do is I'm going to summarize some proposed testing changes. This particular proposal comes after our work group, a lot of which are here, who's our section today and so are here. They've been meeting for the last several months and discussing the teacher shortage. I'm sure you're all very aware of that.
No, no, wait a minute. They wanted to do your presentation for this morning first.
Oh goodness, well let's change gears then. Okay, we can do that.
I think because they're waiting on some people, some other people, they're waiting on some questions.
Yeah, I was a little surprised too. You're flexible. Definitely be flexible.
So let's go back to this one.
Foundation's work session.
We're just trying to confuse you.
I moved on a totally different. I work well under pressure. It'll be fun. I work well under pressure, it'll be fun. No worries at all.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we'll go back to what Dr. Mackey was speaking of this morning when we couldn't get the PowerPoint because I didn't know what to do. But this particular portion would be talking about the adoption of the passing score for foundations of reading. You guys have been with me through this process over the last two years. We have been working on changing over from the teaching reading elementary praxis test, which is the foundational reading assessment that we're using now, and moving to the adoption of the Pearson Foundations of Reading 190 test. If you'll recall, the Pearson 190 is the new version of the Massachusetts test that's replaced the Foundations of Reading 90 test, which has been used by Massachusetts and several other states now for a while. So we're moving along with several other states to this particular new test. Well, when I presented all of this to you last year, you guys were very much in favor and liked what you heard, but you wanted to be sure that we had an Alabama standard setting study, that this test, although it was a Massachusetts test, that it matched with Alabama's standards and what Alabama students and teachers needed. So we began working on that process. December 13th, right before Christmas break, we had a standard setting study of the Renaissance. We had a great group of individuals from across Alabama represented in that standard setting study, a great panel that was very knowledgeable on the science of reading, and it was really wonderful to watch the group work that day. It was a long, hard day, but a great day. We had educators from the classroom, we had administrators from our LEAs, we had college and university personnel that worked with reading instruction. So the knowledge in the room was almost a little bit intimidating. It was a wonderful group, and I really enjoyed being a part of that. So what I'm going to do today is go over with you the recommendations that have come from that group and what we proposed as the adopted score, cut score for foundations of reading. Now, if you remember, according to the rules, when we talked about this before, this will actually go into effect September 1, 2022. So beginning on that date, anyone unconditionally admitted to a state group program, after that date, will have to do this new test, and also anyone that is sending in an application where a test would be applicable would also be moved to meet this new requirement September 1 and thereafter. So if you have questions here, you can certainly stop me and we'll go through it, but a lot of this, I believe, is old information. Familiar with it. Okay, just to recap here, on March 11, 2021, this is when you guys adopted the Foundations of Reading 190 test. It will be the required foundational reading assessment for these areas, for elementary K6 certification, for early childhood P3 certification, and also for our collaborative special education K6. It will replace the current teaching reading elementary praxis test, the 5205 that we were using. And again, September 1 is our date. Okay. And as I said, we did hold the standard setting study on December 13. That was here in Montgomery. We had the panelists represented from various school districts and colleges and universities. They, as they went through that process, they actually took the test in the beginning, and then after taking the test, which I thought was a great way to start, then they began to go through and look at each question very carefully and have lots and lots of spirited debates regarding scores and testing. So again, it was a great day, I learned so much just watching them work. In the end, the panel recommended a passing score of 233. Now, remember, this is a 100 to 300 scale. That 233 equals 55 out of a possible 85 on the multiple choice questions. There are actually 100 multiple choice questions within the test, but 15 of those questions are not scored. They are ones that they are using to collect data for possible test questions in the future. So 85 of the 100 count, this would equal 55 of those, and eight out of 16 possible on the open-ended response. Now, the national benchmark score set by Massachusetts is a 240. That equates to 57 out of the 85 and 10 out of the 16. Very conveniently, I was really pleased with where we landed here, quite honestly. This is one standard deviation below what Massachusetts is using, and I think this is a great place for us to start, and I feel good about this recommendation. Now, you may want to know, okay, 233 is what they're recommending, how does that work as far as what other states are doing? So I thought this slide might be helpful to you. There are several other states that have adopted the 233. Their list to here, Arkansas, Connecticut, Mississippi, and North Carolina. I believe there was a question that came up about Connecticut, I think on their website right now it's showing 240. We did investigate that, and the reason for that is the original plan was to move to the 240, but with COVID and changes that have occurred, they actually did a memo, it just hasn't updated on their website, requesting that their colleges and universities have more time at the 233 so that they can be sure that they are aligning with the studies that needs to happen in their schools of education. So they will remain at 233, that is accurate. The other states that are using 240 right now, of course, Massachusetts, it's their test, we would expect them to be using the national benchmark score, along with that New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Wisconsin, and Arizona. Uton has also come on board. They are doing something similar to what we do with praxis in the beginning, where right now their score is not going to be a consequential score, so they will not officially adopt it for 2024. That's pretty much it. It's short and sweet. If you have questions, I'll be more than happy to go to answer those. Any questions?
I'll take like the praxis, would students have the opportunity to take this test multiple times?
Yes, yes, it is a test that they can register for and take multiple times if needed.
And can the schools get the diagnostics? Can they see, for example, like if they're weak in phonemic awareness, would they get a report that would show that?
They are going to have access to the same system that we're using with edTPA. Now exactly what the breakdown will be on that, I do not know. I certainly asked that question. We had our initial webinar launching, this Foundations of Reading website last week, but right now, of course, it's just general information, but I have a wonderful contact that knows all of those answers, so I'll be more than happy to give that information for you. I'll write that down.
Thank you.
Sure.
So is there a limit in terms of how many times you can take the exam? I know in other professions they do.
We do not have a limit on praxis. We do not have a limit on edTPA, and I don't anticipate a limit here. When you look at our scores and years, the data from years past, we have pretty good success rate of first-time pass on tests. You know, of course, we do have some that need to take it more than once, and we don't penalize for that at this time.
Will we receive a report, just without specifics, too many specifics, obviously? Will we receive a report from the different institutions?
I expect that once this comes on board, it will be part of our higher education report card that we do each year. So, you know, if you looked at the data.
Like we do now.
From that report card, you have first attempt, second attempt, and then three or more attempts. So I'm sure we'll put this in, and that will follow the same protocol. Interesting report.
It is.
Are all the institutions of higher education incorporating the science of reading in their reading courses?
Well, I am definitely not the expert on what they're doing in the edprep programs, but I would say yes at this point in time. I would feel comfortable saying yes there. Some of you that are in higher ed certainly can respond to that if you would like, but yes, certainly with the Literacy Act now being first and foremost in our minds, I think all of our institutions in higher education are working hard to make sure that they're meeting those requirements and adding whatever was needed to courses and then expanding coursework, and I'm correct with that, Dr. Meyer, if they need to move that.
How would you describe the difference in the content of the praxis and what we're?
Well, going back, if you remember, and I did actually bring a copy of the PowerPoint from last time, I should have put it on my thumb drive, we could have pulled it back up. But, you know, we spent a year going through that and looking line by line at the different areas for each test. These are both foundational reading assessments. So are they both aligned with the science of reading? Yes, they are. The committee felt like, after going through questions, we actually went through sample questions as well as live test questions from both. Of course, we had experts that work with early childhood and elementary instruction, those that are very knowledgeable in what's new and upcoming with the science of reading, and they felt as though this test more closely aligned with what beginning teachers, pre-service teachers would need to know in relation to the science of reading. Now, there's a big push right now with dyslexia. There was, you know, a big discussion regarding the testing with that and making sure that even if they're not a specialist in that area, that they would have some working knowledge on, you know, helping students with dyslexia as well as other, you know, difficulties with reading instruction. So in the end, although I think both tests are good tests, and they certainly are both qualified foundational reading assessments, the group felt as though this one was a better test for Alabama and what we were trying to do. But I can certainly send that PowerPoint, if, you know, if that would make you feel better, to go back and review that information again. It won't make me feel necessarily better. No, no. Yeah, well, actually, it breaks down on here, and I wish I'd put this on, I should have put it on my thumb drive thinking back through it, but we actually broke down like all of the different areas, phonological awareness, phonemic awareness, decoding, encoding, fluency, and they tracked and scored the Pearson test versus the test that we're currently using to come up with a possible score for each of those. And that, when we went over that in the board meeting, and that's been a year ago, so I'm sure it's not first and foremost in any of your minds at this point in time, but going through that, it was, it was pretty clear, looking at the numbers, that the Foundations of Reading test was a better choice for all of those various areas of reading instruction that we were looking at. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Oh, sure. And like I said, if we need to make copies of that PowerPoint, I actually have it here. It would be helpful for you guys to have that again from the meeting last year. It has all of the specifics from it. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Yes. I'm an open book, I'm happy to help any way I can. So yes, we'll get copies before you guys leave today and let you take that with you.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
All right.
Sitting next to you.
I don't know.
She's a new employee.
The State Department, she's a new employee.
Yes. We hope you enjoy your time.
I did and I am.
Can you stand for her too much?
Well, thank you so much. We're going to shift gears, and Dr. Chestnut, would you lead us into our next presentation, please?
Yes, we're really excited this afternoon to be able to come before the board with the teacher preparation and certification work group, and we have brought a few people represented here this afternoon, and I want to start by allowing those that are sitting with us to introduce themselves, but we also want to commend the group because we have a lot of representation, and we will take just a minute to give them the opportunity to briefly introduce themselves. We'll start with Dr. Corliss here.
Hello, I'm Dr. Corliss, I'm the dean at Huntington College. I think you know.
Hi, I'm Marcy Smiley, Superintendent, Perry County Schools.
But in addition to these ladies, we also have other members of the group, and we want to give you an opportunity to stand and just introduce yourself at this time.
Hi, everybody.
June Purcell, Executive Director for the Alabama Commission on Higher Ed.
Joshua, I'm a certification officer at the University of South Alabama.
Lieutenant Harrison, Chief Human Resources Officer, Alabaster City Schools.
Kelly Stanton, Educator Certification.
Shabaya Harris, ALSBE, Educator Certification.
Lea Walton, Inter-Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at Alabama and University.
Jeff Ferber, Dean of the College of Education at Auburn University. Two of my people on my leadership team have come to the tour, but I was unable to.
I'm Jeff Goodwin, I'm the President, Moakway Shores Community College. Well, it was placed on for me, I was the superintendent of Officer Chief School District.
District 6. Just in case.
That's right. District 6.
Well, we wanted to give everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves so that all could see that we had great representation on this committee. We'll turn the floor over to Dr. Peacock. After that time, we'll have an opportunity to engage questions.
Absolutely. And I believe Mr. Markham requested that we go through the entire presentation, and then at the end of the presentation, then we'll open the floor to questions, if that works for everyone. Okay, so can I use my clicker?
It's not working, just give me the sign.
I'm just so glad that you're taking care of me. Thank you. Not really good with those clickers. But yes, this is, if you see on that first screen, we have the word proposed in a different color, and the reason for that is because these are obviously a proposed plan based on the recommendations from this wonderful group that you've just been introduced to. So the purpose was twofold here. Obviously, again, we're talking the word teacher shortage. We all know it, you know, we have an issue here in Alabama as well as across the nation, where we do have a shortage of teachers right now, so we're looking for ways that we can increase those teacher placements within school systems. So that speaks to the first point, which would be to increase the quantity of certified educators in Alabama. However, and I know this board takes this very seriously, number two is also equally important, within those new considerations, we want to be sure that we establish parameters to continue to ensure the quality of those educators. So let's put more in, but let's be sure that we're maintaining a level of quality within those educators. Okay? Thank you. In looking at the recommendations, we're actually going to break them down into several different groups. This should help with understanding the different approaches, and I'll go through reasons for the decisions within each group. So the, this first group will be recommendations referring to individuals seeking initial certification after completion of an Alabama-approved educator preparation program in a teaching field. We are not dealing with areas of instructional support, library media, any of that at this point in time. The word is that, of course, the teaching fields are first and foremost a concern right now. We may look at some of those other areas later, but for now, this is just related to teaching fields. Okay? So the first group would be for all teaching fields except early childhood P3, elementary K6, and collaborative K6. As you all know, we treat those three areas a little bit differently just because of the nature of the age of the students that we're working with and the high levels of reading instruction and things like that that we'll need. So with all teaching fields except those three areas, the group proposes that the praxis content knowledge test no longer be required. They are, you know, of course, taking courses, we are trusting our colleges and universities to ensure that that content is at the level that it needs to be, and so we would waive those praxis content knowledge assessments. We would continue to require the edTPA, you know, the edTPA is the performance assessment, that is the portfolio that's traditionally done during the internship, where we assess whether or not the individual is capable of planning a lesson, teaching that lesson, differentiating the instruction during the teaching, and then assessing and planning the next steps after. In essence, you know, the three components of good teaching. We feel like that's still very important, although they've had observation hours, they are not truly in charge of their own classroom until they're out there and certified and ready to put the boots on the ground. So we feel that the edTPA is something we do need to preserve. Now, there are just a very few areas where edTPA is not available, and for those areas, we would continue to use the praxis PLT, Principles of Learning and Teaching, which was the assessment we used prior to the adoption of edTPA. It is also a performance assessment. Okay? Next. Thank you. All right, for the areas of elementary education P3, elementary, I mean, I'm sorry, early childhood education P3, elementary education K6, and collaborative special education K6, we would not require the praxis content knowledge assessment for those areas as well, so similar to the slide before. We will require the foundational reading assessment, the foundations of reading that I just went over, that is mandated in the Literacy Act, and that's not something that we can change, so that would continue to be a requirement, and the edTPA would be a requirement there as well. All right, so that ends our individuals that are in educator preparation programs. So the next set of recommendations, we refer to individuals seeking initial certification through an alternate route that requires at least one year of teaching experience prior to applying for their professional educator certificate. So first and foremost, when you think about an alternate route, we think about like our provisional certificate, where someone has a bachelor's degree in another area, they decide that they want to come into teaching, and so a school system wants to hire them, and they begin the provisional route. We use the words here for any alternate route because we wanted these rules to be able to apply to new routes that are being discussed. that are being discussed or things that may come in the future, as long as they do require the one-year teaching experience. Okay, recommendations for this particular group. We do want to be sure that they have content knowledge. That is important. So we need a way of verifying that. Content knowledge can be verified through a couple of different ways. They can take the Praxis Content Knowledge Assessment, which is what we require now, and meet the required score. Or they can have official, an official transcript confirming an academic major or equivalent, that could be a bachelor's or higher, in that specific teaching field. For example, I'm looking to teach biology, and I have a bachelor's degree in biology. That would be an acceptable substitution for the content knowledge assessment. We would not require the edTPA or PLT from this group. And the logic there was that when they're going through the alternate route, they are working in the classroom as the teacher of record. So the boots are on the ground, so to speak. They are not just coming in and doing observations. They are the teacher of record with a mentor, of course, supervising that instruction, as well as the administration of the school. So we felt like that teacher of record experience during the time that they were on the alternate pathway could take the place of the edTPA or the PLT. So in summary, what we're looking to propose would be to suspend, and we use the word suspend here because this would be something that we're doing right now to ensure that we can fill those classrooms and take care of the needs that we're hearing about. And of course, not setting any type of timeline on this. Obviously, we need to spend some time looking at data once changes are made, if changes are made, to see what our next steps need to be. So the word suspend seemed to be a fitting word to use here. Suspend the content knowledge assessment, which is Praxis for individuals that are completing an educator preparation program in a teaching field. And suspend the performance assessment via TPA or PLT for individuals that are on an alternate route that requires at least one year of teaching experience. All right.
Number four.
I'll be going now.
What we did last time, Denise, was go back page by page so that the questions.
Are you going to do that format? I am certainly comfortable with going through that format again, if you guys are happy with that.
We also want to give Dr. Corliss and Dr. Smiley an opportunity to share.
Yes, please.
From various perspectives. We have Dr. Corliss, the dean, as well as Dr. Smiley, the superintendent.
So feel free to jump in and correct us.
Or if you want to say anything before the questions.
Right.
You may get through them ahead of time.
True, right.
Well, I'll start. Again, good afternoon, everyone. And as Superintendent of Perry County School System, I truly represent the boots on the ground. We are a rural school district with only two pre-K through 12th grade schools, 20 miles apart, 90% free and reduced lunch. We have worked really hard, but the, the options that we have are just not as available as other school districts. In August, the teacher shortage really hit us. If we rewind back to 2018, we had 80% of our secondary health and science teachers who required the emergency certification route. Fast forward to the teacher shortage, even though those, 80% of those teachers required the certification, the emergency certification, we were able to work with those teachers through mentoring and professional development. So we were able to provide a sense of sustainability. If we fast forward to the teacher shortage, the teacher shortage has been detrimental in the Perry County school system. In August, after a year and a half of being remote, we were contemplating maybe having to go remote again, not because of the lack of substitutes, you know, for the teachers who were possibly out due to COVID for isolation or quarantine protocols, but because we did not have teachers at all. We have had three elementary vacancies, two of which I have just filled. I just filled one in January and just filled one this past Monday. So those babies have sat in classrooms with some supplemental supports as best we could and ways not to overtax our existing teachers with literally no teacher. And no teacher, not because of the lack of looking for a teacher, but because there were no applicants available for emergency route, any other alternative route. So the pool non-existent. I just filled a health science position in January, which means that for our two high schools who are on block scheduling, those students have now, since January, gone on to another block of classes. Those students did not have access to a certified health science teacher, which again is the alternative route. We are looking for ways to close the achievement gap. We're looking for ways to provide the rigorous instruction that we know is necessary for our students to compete. But we cannot do that without teachers. These opportunities, and I want to commend the task force and all the colleagues who've been on there, because, and Dr. Mackey for his vision, because they have had a listening ear as to ways and opportunities to increase the number of teachers, the number of applicants that are available. Because with the few, without these proposed suspensions and changes, then the ones who are able to come out with the existing requirements are not going to choose Perry County. So in order for us to have a fair shot at getting applicants, the pool has to increase. And this opportunity would work in increasing that, so that we're able to give our students the fair instructional content that they need in order to be effective.
I knew I should have gone first. I think, I think higher ed, one of the main concerns is not only quantity, but quality, you know? Producing a quality person for these positions that you're talking about. You know, I, all of our programs are very rigorous. The students have to go through extensive field hours, internships, take all these assessments. So it's a, it's a rigorous program. And so, you know, I think we're concerned about, you know, quality, putting quality out there. That will keep them in the field long term. Because if they go out and they're not prepared, they're not going to stay, more than likely. So that's, that's our viewpoint in an eggshell.
That's good.
Can you talk just for a moment briefly about the differences in how you came to the conclusion that the Praxis would be the one that is removed or no longer required, and edTPA would still be required? And the reason I ask is I've had complaints about both. And so from a professional standpoint, can you talk to me about why this was your decision, your recommendation? Yes, ma'am, that'd be fine. A member would like to. Yes, ma'am?
Well, just from a superintendent's perspective, and knowing that we have teachers who are very qualified and who are actually on the emergency certification route and are within a few points shy of passing the Praxis. So do we hold individuals out? Has been the conversation in the, with the task group. Because they have not checked that box. We know that there are individuals who aren't great test takers and will never be great test takers. But that does not mean that they can't be great and aren't great teachers. So the, the edTPA gives them the pedagogy rather than just that one sitting. And letting that one sitting and one test be the determination as to whether they are a teacher or not. And with the suspension of that, it's going to, to give a lot of individuals an opportunity to remain in education. Because we know that right now, I may be taking your, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, but we know we have individuals who are sitting in post-secondary now and not being able to pass the Praxis and not being able to go on and, you know, participate in their student teaching and all of those things that are not graduating, who are taking different paths and who won't be in education. So it's another opportunity for us to widen that pool so that the teacher shortage that is across the state can be really, we can, we can flood the gates. We can flood the gates. Because my concern, also as a superintendent, was not just this year, it's next year. When we have a host of teachers who are at that 25-year mark, and for whatever reason, they're retiring. And so now we were, we were shy. A few teachers. It's going to be even more. So if we don't have a way to increase that pool, we're looking at not just replacing one teacher, but it'll help replace the staff.
It has been a barrier. Practice has been a big barrier. I've talked to several deans across the state. And just talking with them, we know of 200 to 300 students that could now be in the teacher pool if it had not been for Praxis holding them back. They, they get, our students get the content knowledge. They have over 30 hours in their teaching field that they have to complete. So they've got the content knowledge. Like Dr. Smiley has mentioned, you know, that one test, that one sitting is keeping them back. So, you know, and so we just feel like it's a huge barrier. And may I add, I think edTPA, it gives evidence of best practices. And is that not what we want? And so we, and to me, once they pass that, then it, we almost acknowledge that they're going to be better teachers because of it. Whereas it's not just the content, but those best practices is what you want for those babies, and you want your graduates. So that's, that was one of the shining stars for me, as far as the differentiation.
One thing that I was gonna note, some young people that we know perhaps can teach because they have to do lesson plans, they are stopped before they can even get to edTPA because of the Praxis. So this is gonna widen that pool. And we know, as you said, they will do well because they know the content knowledge. They maybe miss it by one or two points. And they have to stop. They're just there. So this is really gonna broaden everything.
And Dr. Smiley, did you not say that one, you had some that got at the end of taking it over twice? They just said, that's it on the.
Yeah.
Even though it's.
Who took it again? They just said, I'm out of here.
Right, yes, yes.
We don't need any blockades.
Is there a difference with edTPA? I know that one of the complaints about Praxis has been the expense to the student. Is there a fee associated with edTPA?
Yes, it's $300. This Praxis is, runs anywhere from like $120 to $170.
Per.
Per test.
Per session. And if you don't pass all sections, then you don't move forward, correct?
But aren't there grants that some college students, universities apply for, for their students? So oftentimes, I know where I am, it's not a cost for the student because they applied for the grant. Yes.
I know, again, as you've already said, this discussion is happening across the country.
It is.
And in different states, it's interesting to see how they are addressing this. I'm sure that you reviewed that in your deliberations. I think the one thing that we do not want to happen in this state is we don't want to just bring anyone into the classroom. We want them to be so prepared, as you've already pointed out, that they don't get frustrated the first or second or third year if they last that long, and they leave. And sometimes it's retail, and sometimes it's whatever. But I think the one thing that we learned in the beginning, after we were able to go back and actually have teacher testing in Alabama, and of course, we remember that history, and it was not an easy path to, to go through, and it was not an easy, I mean, we had to undertake a lot. And when I, I can remember going to a meeting in DC and returning and saying, they're going to require this. Every state will have to have some teacher testing. And then a personal experience with the judge in the case sort of opened the gate, and everything came together. But it, but now that we're here, I think the main concern, and I, I see it especially in areas where we have multiple challenges with students. We don't want just anyone into the, in the classroom. And we've seen it in, in George Hollis often mention as a, as a successful, not just an experiment, but a, a successful venture. It was not easy. But what we had to do is we had to reconstitute the school, and we had to replace teachers, which unfortunately, you feel for those who were replaced. But in this whole process, obviously, you know, we're talking about teachers, we're talking about getting people into the classroom. But the primary concern, and I know teachers have a gift, their primary concern is that child in that classroom in the very short time that they have them. And that also, in this process, as we look at bringing more teachers into the classroom, the quality, as you've already mentioned, to me is so crucial. And I understand that there are programs, and I'm sure you've already exhausted that list that where you can attract students, or they're students now, but graduates who can come into those areas. And it seems to me with a lot of what's happening across the street, that might be something that we can work toward in terms of encouraging a lot of those bright, among the best graduates to go into areas where you have other challenges, where you don't have a lot of good shopping, you don't have a lot of the arts programs. But they can also bring a lot into that classroom. I know when our daughter was at Sanford, they did a lot with the libraries in Sandy, in Perry County. And my mother-in-law served on the board for many years, judgment before it closed, and it was heartbreaking to her. And of course, a lot of those students were incentivized because they loved the community. They'd stay there. And I don't, you know, the program was shrinking anyway before the school closed. But it seems to me that that's one area, as we look at all of this, to ensure both quality and incentivizing bringing those teachers who are among the best of our graduates to areas where we need them the most. And it may be reconstituting, but we don't need to go into the, or get into a situation.
And a lot of it is the content, the love of the field, just the energy that those individuals have. And I think that the edTPA does a better job of illustrating those particular aspects.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Mackey? Did I see some legislation which talked about alternate, dealing with the teacher shortage, alternate programs outside the School of Education, as you mentioned, across the street? I assume you meant the legislature.
So those are, so that's why, again, this came largely out of the work group, earlier recommendation from their first meeting in January.
Is that legislation still proceeding?
Moving, moving through.
Tell us about it.
What we do currently, so it's, the alternate certification is on, it is the only piece of certification that the legislature passed a law years ago to set up alternate certification, otherwise the board controls it. But they set up an alternate certification law. And basically, it, it says, I'll lean on Dr. Peacock, Dr. Meyer there a little bit, but they, you have to have these teacher, people going back to school to earn an alternate bachelor's or an alternate master's certi, degree and certificate. They have to teach for three years. It used to be three years in one school, or one district. And we had problems, I know early on, that somebody would say be teaching in Mobile, and then their spouse would get a job in Tuscaloosa, and so they had to move. The way the law was, they had to move, they had to start all over. So we got that changed to where it's three years, but they don't all have to be in the same place. But one of the things that we've heard from the work group is why make it three years? Others do a semester of student teaching or a year. And so one of the ways that fits handing glove for the presentation today, Dr. Peacock made, she said, no edTPA, that they would be required to do Praxis, but no edTPA if they have a year teaching in a classroom with their own children. So if that law passes, then everything would marry up to one year experience. So if that law passes, then everything would marry up to one year experience for alternate certifications. Now, we also asked for a change as that was moving along. This is a little bit different, but it's, but it's very important related. We work with the institutions of higher education. We have some others here too, that aren't technically on the committee, but they're very interested, and I want to recognize them in a minute. So we have two or three providers that don't provide teacher certification in Alabama, who are private for-profit companies that have tried to get in. And they've hired lobbyists, at least two of them, and we're trying to get their own bills moved through the legislature that would set them up as being able to basically certify teachers outside of the state board process and outside of our institutions of higher education. So we worked with Senator Nelson to get an addition on that bill, the alternate teacher, that we started out just changing from three years to one, to say that any alternate certification program like that would have to come through the state board and meet the same requirements as our institutions of higher education have to do. So now there was some pushback, but we, right now, we are winning that battle because I think your senators and House members see that the quality control needs to be with us and our institutions of higher education. And if, there may be, the deans might disagree with him, but there may be a good for-profit company out there that's located in Utah that can do a good job, but they should have to meet the same requirements that these deans are having to meet as far as quality. And they should have to be approved, have an approval process through the state board, not just they get basically an imprimatur from the legislature saying they get to operate outside of our rules. And again, that was proposed, our legislature pushed back on that and said, no, what, you know, Mackey's brought to us, the state board ought to be under that. So that is in there. I feel really good about it. I think it's a great change for the, for the alternate certification. And I think we, we spoke, Dr. Kenny's over there, Dr. Katie Kenny, you met last month. I know, but she's the dean at UNA and also the president of the Deans Association, Alacay. But we worked together with the Higher Education Partnership, Gordon Stone, his group, to make sure that we had, that we could all agree on that.
So they're, they're still not pushing a separate entity without, outside the State Board of Education and outside the College of Education like it was initially introduced? That's why they wanted to clarify.
Those bills, none of them have been forwarded at all. And only our bill is moving, and it requires what we want.
Dr. McCarty. Purpose to increase the quantity of certified educators in Alabama. Partly that can be done by recruitment, right? And like you said, lowering barriers so to give more people a chance to see if this is a good fit for them. And then we verify that with EdTPA for the traditional student. But then I would say the second half of widening out that pie is retention, right? So we want to recruit and get good people, train them well, you know, have them graduate, go out in the schools, come work for you.
And then I keep them.
And then you keep them. So then that's my second issue. Did this body, did y'all research? I know Dr. Purcell has done some research on retention. Was that part of your scope in what you addressed? How to retain, not just how do we attract these teachers? These good, smart, hardworking, dedicated young people, or older people, but into this? But then also, how do we make sure that we provide what they need so that they stay? Because that's what breaks my heart. We put in all this, you, you work so hard to get them up to speed, send them to you, and then they leave. So did this body, did your task force also address that issue? And if not, will you go forward? I would love to, now, some of y'all may run out of the room when I say this, but I would love for you to stay here and continue your work and say, okay, this is, we've got this, good on this, but now we gotta work on the retention piece. What can we do?
Yeah, so in short, this group, no. We asked them specifically, work group on teacher preparation and certification. Work on preparation and certification. Retention, Mr. Markham, I know he's out of state today, but he's already working on, we're gonna pull together another group because we feel like teachers need to be on that group to talk about retention. It's a different group.
Okay.
And we're gonna start that work in the early summer because we're trying to get through school being out and bring in a new group, may have some overlap, but essentially a new group to look at retention. And that's gonna be a harder nut to crack because, now, I'd like for, I do want to go back to Superintendent Smiley and let her talk about the retention piece and what the difficulties she has retaining people. That'll get into some things that we don't control as we know, because we, I met with a group of teachers yesterday and the number one thing they complained about was tier-two retirement. And how could I fix that? And I said, well, I can't fix that. But we'll continue to lobby for that in the legislature. But that's not the only thing. Working with our higher ed partners, I think, on making sure, this is an AJO thing, but teachers come in not only ready to handle their subject area, ready to handle the classroom assessment, those things, but classroom discipline and those kinds of things. And we've talked about that, that has changed. But the short answer to your question is, we specifically asked them, you look at teacher preparation and certification, bring us quickly. And one of the things we've, our tact has changed, Dr. Meyer knows, because she and I have served on a lot of task forces together. We've had task forces where we had 40 or 50 people, gave them a huge charge, and 12 to 24 months, we asked them, in four months, we want this work done. Bring us a result, bring us a recommendation quickly. And therefore, we're gonna give you a very targeted goal. But the next piece is retention. And so I don't want to, I didn't want them to feel like, well, we didn't do that because they specifically were asked not to. But I do think, I'll take your question though, if I may defer it, let Superintendent Smiley talk about the problems with retention. And others may have that too, may have some things, but I know she has a hard time retaining, attracting and retaining.
Because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, Perry County, very rural, no Walmart, one grocery store, you know, in, in one of the cities, no grocery store in the other city. The schools are 20 miles apart. So, you know, there's nothing really there to keep them, to retain teachers. The younger teachers, they're wanting to, you know, after they travel and commute a couple of years from Tuscaloosa, from Montgomery, you know, some from Birmingham, it is, they want to establish their foundational roots where they're, where they can run to the mall for, you know, in 15 minutes, or they can run to Walmart. And so those are things that our infrastructure does not support. It's not that the schools aren't there, it's not that, and aren't effective, it's not that we're not providing the necessary supports and have all the opportunities for them to, and resources for them to be able to effectively run their classrooms. We're just competing with the city life, you know? And I have a 20-year-old who has chosen to live in Birmingham. And if he comes home, it's only four days, and he says, you know, mom, I'm gone. So, and that is what we're doing. And we're educating our, our children, preparing them well. And, but they're leaving and they're not coming back because there's really not a lot of afterlife for them to come back to, especially if they've gone off to a college or university in a city and they have gotten accustomed to having that immediate access to things.
Thank you. And then the issue with classroom management, are we planning on, like at Mega Conference, for example, will we offer PD on, on classroom management steps that, whether principals or teachers, steps they can take, like best practices, whatever, and I don't know what the best practices are, but whatever they are, that we do sessions, because that seemed to be a finding as well, that some of the teachers were, they, they were frustrated by problems with perhaps student discipline and that sort of thing. And so it might be a way to address, it's not the big issue, like you said, tier-two, but it's one of the issues that seem to come up.
I would imagine, you know, Dr. Lewis was in last month and talked about they do those workshops on discipline. I would imagine she's doing sessions at Mega Conference, but I do not know that for sure. We'll find that out. I know they are, like she mentioned, they are on the road constantly going in and out of schools because there's a demand for that. But, you know, y'all mentioned, and I hope you help us get the word out because like you get a new principal and he doesn't know, that's an option that she can come in and do that work with your teachers. So we, but anyway, that is an ongoing theme. I don't know for sure about Mega Conference, but we will, we'll check on that. And I know that is, Dr. Corliss may want to do that, to talk about that or some of these other deans. That is an issue for them too, because it's hard to, I can remember, even when I was at school, and that's been a while back, but to talk to somebody who's 17, 18, 19, hey, this is what a classroom's gonna be like, and this is how you do classroom discipline. And I would say Jacksonville State did a masterful job trying to prepare me for that. When you actually get thrown into your own classroom at 32, it's a different story. And that's where this mentoring and bringing teachers alone comes in. But I do think we have to have that ongoing conversation. Social media is such a problem now, those kind of things. Yeah, but I don't know, Dr. Corliss or Dr. Kenny or Dr. Fairbrother, any of them may have some other thoughts on that.
Can I go back to retention? And I would like to, I would like to address that as well. I, I think to get a clear picture of retention, I mean, I know what it is at Huntington, but I don't know what it is at my colleagues' institutions. But I think we need to really look at all avenues, all avenues. How long are these alternative approach student, teachers in the classroom? How long are they staying? How long are our traditional, you know, prepared teachers staying? So I, I just think that we need to have a clear picture across, across the board of all avenues when we're talking about retention. Because there, again, I go back, if they're not prepared, then they're not, probably not gonna stay. The classroom management piece, that's another thing that the alternative approaches a lot of times are lacking. Because our students do extensive field hours where they're in the schools and they have the opportunity to look at different classroom management strategies, instructional strategies. So they're getting a lot of, a lot of different looks at that. And they're in diverse settings too. They don't go to just one school and they do all their observations there. Our elementary students do over 300 hours of field observations before they ever get to internship. So they've, they've gone out to a lot of different schools, different districts. So they've seen a lot, and we encourage them to keep a classroom management strategy notebook throughout all of their field placements. So, but until, like Dr. Mackey said, until you're actually in there doing it all by yourself, then, you know, it's, it's hard to, you can't stand up in front of a classroom to teach, teach the classroom management. You've got to be out there doing it.
And we do, to follow up on that, she's exactly right. Now, we have national data, we, I think our retention group's gonna want to pull some Alabama data. Dr. Purcell can help us with that. But, but nationally, people who go through an alternate approach do not stick with it as long as people who are, they go to college at 18 and they want to be a teacher. And there may be a lot of reasons for that. It may be preparation, part of it, part of it is that maybe they're, you know, it's a backup plan versus an aspirational goal from childhood. But we definitely need more 18, 19-year-olds. Well, y'all saw a perfect example. I know our guest didn't, this morning, when I asked those instrumentalists upstairs, does anybody in this group plan to be a teacher? And not one handed up. And I did ask the conductor, by the way, afterward, he said, every year, he's taught strings at Tuscaloosa City for nine years, every year he has produced at least one music teacher, at least one person has graduated and gone out to become a music teacher, including one who is now teaching middle school strings for him until this year. And he said, this is the first year I have no one in my strings program interested in being a teacher. So he followed up with me on that. I asked him, I said, have they really been serious with me? And he said, yes, and let me tell you more, that this is the first time that that's been true. So it's.
Well, and let, one word, and this is just a clarifying question. On the alternate certificate, that they have a bachelor's degree in another field? And then, then they would come to us and your proposal that they wouldn't need to take the praxis, right? Because they've already demonstrated. Is there, I know in some of the code that we have, we require a minimum GPA. Is there a minimum GPA for this?
Yes, there is.
Okay, what, can you tell me what it is?
It was 2.75 and it was just decreased to 2.5.
Okay, I'm gonna write that down. Just so I have it in my notes.
So it'll be, there'll be options, the praxis will still be an option for them. But then if they have, for example, their degree is in the area that they want to teach, or if they have a degree in mathematics, then they can use that and move up the praxis.
Thank you, I just, just like to know.
I just have a question regarding the local competitive edge that you may have. Would it be an incentive in other states we're competing against, and I know you're aware of this, states that actually have, and it's really more local than it is statewide, but the legislatures have actually been putting in place incentive packages for teachers? In some areas, it has to do with housing, it has to do with paying for the move, it has to do, I'll pay off your, you know, your expenses and it'll be sort of like a scholarship or a grant if you fulfill this, sign the contract, if you fulfill these requirements. Do you think that would actually help? Because that's a pretty area.
It is.
And you know that.
Yeah.
It's just, it doesn't have all of the other things that we know about that young people are attracted to. But even if you did that for single moms who really feel led to go into teaching or some others who otherwise would not have the resources to do something like that, because it's such a, again, it's such a nice area where you get away from all of that.
Right.
For those that are perhaps interested, yes.
Right, they don't need the nightlight, they have it, they're closing their eyes at 8 o'clock.
And there is that movement now, and that's a good thing where, perhaps it was COVID, who knows? But there is that cohesiveness that, you know, that family unit that people are now trying to build as a part of their future. And it, it makes sense that a place like that, and that's actually, you know, those packages, I know even in areas like Atlanta, they're spending big money on moving us and paying, all of those things. And I assume that would be.
Very beneficial, very beneficial that would be. And it's something that, you know, there, those are things that we've discussed, but just could not afford, you know, in Perry County. So, and it would level the plane bill to a degree if you got someone who has children, who wants to, you know, live outside of the city life and then also have housing or pay off college loans. We've discussed the ins and outs of that, but with no solution as to how we could financially support it. Yes, because we, we have to be intentional. Because we can't offer those other things, we have to be intentional about targeting our area in a way that will make it competitive.
Well, I think that looking at the Black Belt in, just as a whole, it's one area where business and industry could actually make some contributions in terms of attracting some of the better teachers, teachers in general.
Right.
But those who actually will stay there. And I think that's a challenge, it's anywhere. Actually, Montgomery has that challenge. They go in and they, they leave.
Well, Dr. Mackey, could we possibly add just another component to the responsibility of the retention committee to consider formulating an incentive package for. an incentive package for hard-to-staff school districts? Particularly those that are, have experienced challenges for years. But really be, that includes also funding. Because in situations such as Perry County and many of the school districts in the Black Belt, if it's left to them to fund it, then you still won't have it. But we've got to be intentional in really providing the resources and support so that we can get on the even playing field, and right now, we're not.
Yeah, we absolutely will. At least, and the, we do have a long payoff program. It's limited to math and science. Am I right? Dr. Purcell helps us with that. So we, they might look at an extent, an expansion there. We have had some districts, and I think Superintendent Smiley is one of them, who they've tried boning, like signing bonuses.
Yes, and we have those, but, excuse me for interrupting.
No, please.
But we can't compete with the higher signing bonus system for the more affluent school system. So, so we do have those.
I wonder if adding.
Yeah.
I wonder if adding some expertise from economic development, if someone would consider serving on that committee that's actually worked in the field of economic development, that's put together incentives to bring business to communities. Could potentially help us develop some sort of package and maybe build a relationship there to see the need and then understand the area a little better. Sometimes I think they're just not aware that, that economic development, economic developers are not aware that there are facilities where businesses could locate, for instance, in Perry County, to provide jobs. And maybe if they would help us with our retention, we could help them identify some places where we really need their recruitment for business and industry.
Good point. Dr. Fairbrother?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty new to this thing. So you'll excuse me if I, if I don't get things right, a little bit of an outsider's perspective. That's an excellent idea. I think we all know that good school tr- districts attract companies. Companies then attract investment in the community. That increases the tax base. That, that benefits the schools. I think one of the things that we need to be mindful of when we think about retention is that financial incentives often were great for recruitment, but they backfired on retention. Because you create an arms race, and, and the districts that need it the most are the ones that can't keep up anywhere.
That's right.
And so we're, we're basically just creating a system that harms all of our rural, uh, lower SES districts. And the other thing is that retention trends across broader society are leading to shorter and shorter tenures. I think the Bureau of Labor Statistics says that the median time in a job is now four point nine years. Teaching is a little bit less than that nationally. And so the other big thing we need to think about, this is a really tough question, is what do we do as teacher operation programs if the retention program does not, or, uh, problem does not go away? If it continues to shrink, how do we make sure that the students are still served with people who are not going to stay in a career for fifteen, twenty years? Because that is a, that's how, that's something we don't want to see. But I think the, uh, it would be a problem if we neglected the fact that that could be what's happening. Because it's certainly happening in other industries. You know, the, the service industry is like one point nine years for people to stay in a job. And so if there's high turnover, how do you ensure quality with high turnover? Which we don't want to see, but we should make sure.
Absolutely. And we're dealing with a, a dynamic, there are controls that we have in place that, that others don't. For instance, pandemic, we all know, we've all seen. Millions of people went to working from home, millions of them stayed. And because, you know, private business found that work. We obviously, our people have to be at work every day from seven to four. There's no way around that. And it, but, and I don't mean to say that tongue in cheek, because it's making it much harder to get millennials and the generation after them to want to be teachers. Because they want more flexibility, and we don't. But there's some flexibilities, we just don't have the opportunity to give them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yet.
Yes.
You know, the retention rate in, in these incentives afterwards, that's great, but we've got to, I think that we need to look at an approach to incent, give them incentives on the front end to even make them want to go into teaching. You know, ways that we can help them with tuition or whatever. And I don't know where the funds would come from on that, but we've got to get the student body to want to be teachers again. So incentive, incentive, you know, an incentive on the front end may be an approach that we may think about at some point.
And I think the environment where teachers are always the ones, besides the state board, are blamed for whatever's happening in education. You know, it's always, we're, we're right there too. It's like, uh. But anyway, it's, I agree with you. And that's where you talk to young people and they're not interested. And it's not just pay, it's that desire to go into something where they don't feel appreciated. Exactly. And, and that's a shame, because we can all look back at our teachers and we can name them, most of them, if not all, because we appreciate everything that they contribute to our lives. And that partnership with parents was so important then, and I, that's the other thing. There, once they get there, they don't feel like, you know, parents are on their side anytime. They're always on the opposite side. So that's another negative. They hear about, yes. And, and then the liabilities, they're saying, you know, one of the things that they tell young ladies and gentlemen when they go into the classroom is, make sure you have insurance. Which goes back to the liability challenges. And I, I just, it's not that they're not fair, it's just that we have a totally different environment that is not one, that is, it's just not conducive to attracting those at the front end to go into and then graduate from programs that actually they probably would find out that they love in the end. If, again, but I think some of it has to do with just the overall environment. Teachers are attacked constantly. And, and that's, um, that, that's something that we should all be concerned about.
Well, Mr. Markham, as we were going through the, the work group, he would constantly bring us back to the purpose of this work group, and of course, those of us in there who are former teachers who have that heart of a teacher, if you've ever been a teacher, you never lose that heart. And, uh, yeah, so we would constantly be wanting to move to that recruitment piece, and he would have to bring us back. So I'm very eager and excited about moving to that second phase of this. You know, in the sense of, you know, me personally thinking back on being a teacher and then having a daughter who is a teacher now, who I, I love that because she keeps me grounded on the realities of what's going on in education now, and it's, that's so helpful. But, you know, we talked about with, um, with recruiting, you know, starting in the junior highs in the high schools and going in and talking, talking to those students about the possibilities of going into education. You know, having like early ed programs at career tech centers in the high schools and stuff, and giving them opportunities to work with students, or having, you know, those in the high school going back to the elementary school and working with struggling readers. I mean, we were, those of us in there, we were brainstorming and talking about all of these great ways to get people excited about the possibilities of teaching, which I think those are, are very viable solutions. I mean, and, and wonderful things that we could do today with very little, you know, money in doing those. And then secondly, of course, the biggest part is working with our current teacher pool. I mean, we think back historically with teachers, you know, who were the biggest advocates to bring more people into the profession of teaching with those that were teachers right now? So it's, it's finding ways to make those teachers feel good about what they're doing and for them to say to their children and their students, you know, go into teaching, this is a great field. And so I, I, we've, we've got some of that kind of in the back of our mind, and, and I know I personally am excited about it. And I think that, uh, you know, there's some good things that will come from that committee. So once we have the nuts and bolts here, I think moving into that next phase will be able to do some really good things. We've got, we've got ideas brewing. We just aren't.
Uh, we're like those, we're trying to go off on that tangent.
That's just part of being a teacher. He would constantly have a, back to the purpose.
Well, but when I looked at the purpose, it was quantity, right? I mean, you say just recruitment, it was, you know, so I took it as the whole.
Exactly, exactly.
The reality.
That's actually part of it.
It is.
You know, it's a big part of it.
It really, really is.
That's why it takes another committee, right?
That's.
Right.
The reality and Ms. Bell related to it. Some of the atmospheres in our schools don't encourage someone to follow that profession. And my wife and I are both teachers. Both of our children are not. They're engineers. And all that our children had to do was see what we went through, what we dealt with on a day-to-day basis, and we were administrators. And we, our children lived in school, worked at schools that didn't have a lot of diversity or crime or disruption. But still, when you read and you hear scenarios about what school environments are like on a day-to-day basis, and we talk to the other teachers in Perry County, or Limestone County, or DeKalb County, and they relate their stories and their stresses, you can understand, like in the music director today, why he's going to multiple schools and his lifestyle is not all that desirable compared to some professional musician, why some of those students don't choose to go that way. And that's a reality. We can't, that's the, that's the five-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. It's what the atmosphere is like that our students see in their elementary and secondary schools. Why do you want to choose that? And one of the juxtapositions that we have is that we've been very adamant about career technical education and the advantages in both lifestyle and financial that those career avenues have. They compete with people who would be teachers. And we've sat here and seen the legislature say, teachers don't really choose the profession because of retirement, which is, as a financial person, is asinine, you know? It's as- asinine. And that's, that's a across-the-street problem, right, Ms. Bell?
Oh, I think, I think the other problem is, since you mentioned the legislature, and I hear this constantly, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, that they're always filling out forms and, you know, it used to be paper, now it's online. And they spend so much time having to fill out the information, whatever it is that's required, that they do not have time to teach. And that is out there as well, and that's what we keep having more and more of. And I get the data collection, but at the same time, data collection keeps them from doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's, that's just one of many things. But yes, I agree. I, I think.
It's not just financial compensation.
No, it's not. It's a number of big things.
And, and community satisfaction. You know, I'm older than almost everybody in this room, and I came out of the military and education was an option. I'm a first-generation college graduate. And traditionally, those kind of people become educators, traditionally. That's not the case with my children. Not the case with my children. And we're competing with the real world. You can't, teacher recruitment is fine, but you're competing with a real-world environment where you have alternatives. You know, one of my daughter's best friends is in education, but she's not, my daughter is not, is she, Dean?
No.
All right.
Yes.
Sure, I'll page you.
Ready.
Okay.
I think we've done it all.
Let's recognize the other higher ed people who are here. I think we just lost one. I mentioned Dean Kenny.
That sounds terrible.
Athens State, introduce yourself again. I apologize. I believe our tanian dean of the College of Education. And I should have, I'm sorry, your name split me all of a sudden as I was saying it. I thought I was going to let him say it. Uh, do we have some others? Yes, yes.
I'm Kelly Schumack at Auburn University of Montgomery. I'm interim dean.
Thank you.
Joe Johnson, Teacher Education Chair, Troy.
Thank you for coming.
And let's go over.
Introduce yourself.
Uh, Dr. Lewis, Auburn University of Montgomery.
So our institutions are well-represented.
Yes, that's good.
And it's good to have them a part of this conversation.
Well, we just want to thank everybody that served on the committee. Words can never express our gratitude for your commitment, your time, and how you pour your hearts and sweat and tears into making this possible. Thank you, Dr. Pethock. Thank, thank you, Dr. Corliss, Dr. Smiley.
So does that mean we're finished meeting?
We haven't finished with this part.
Comment.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, a quick point of clarification, as I was taking notes. When you said you're going to drop the content for elementary, are you talking about the multi-subjects praxis?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The foundational reading assessment would still be.
We're staying.
But not.
Multi-subjects, we go like, oh, thank you.
Yes.
I can also ask a clarification question about the state board approval for the alternative programs. Is the chip process also included in that? Because that's a very expensive process that we have to go through to make sure that our candidates are meeting these processes. So will those alternative pathways have to continue, go through that continuous improvement process that we do for our education programs?
Yeah. It'll be something, it'll be a similar process. She's, if, we, the law has to pass first. We're internally looking at some of those things too. We've got multiple things we're working on, so. But yes, the intention is they would have to have a quality control process like the institutions do. I think the, the short answer is yes. It's a little more complex, but yes, Dr. Lewis, that's the intention. And we're looking at some of our internal things too, with our institutions of higher ed and with this. So Dr. Meyer decided to start ten projects right before she retired. Pick them up and keep going. She's great. I'm just glad I still know where she lives. So, Dean from A&amp;M.
Yes, I, I was studying at Alabama A&amp;M College of Education before, when I was drafted into the committee. And I just want to address the questions about quality versus quantity and whether or not quality will still be there if the praxis goes away. The colleges of education are held to various standards. Standards by the national accreditation body and standards by the State Department in Alabama. Each college of education has to go through rigorous reviews on both. For example, in, in Alabama, the review is on each program. And each program must demonstrate that it is, it has created a curriculum around all the requirements that are laid out. Secondly, we have to demonstrate an assessment system that shows how we know that our teacher, how, how we know that the, the students that we have going through the pipeline and when they graduate are meeting those requirements. And so in order for us to even put a program in place, we have to go through that process. We have to demonstrate the various courses that we are putting each of those students through. We have to demonstrate that they all meet the GPA, and we have to demonstrate that we, we are assessing them accordingly. So that part of the quality, I do not have any reservations about. I have watched the students go through this program. When they get to take in the praxis, which, which coincidentally does not demonstrate that they have the content. We keep saying that the praxis demonstrate content. It demonstrates a little piece of the content. It doesn't demonstrate the overall. I think the courses that we're putting them through actually demonstrate the content. Because, a- again, I say, we have to go through all of the requirements that we're, we have to adhere to those requirements that the state sets for us. So for, so all of the math, they have to take courses that cover all the math. Not just the little piece that is in the praxis. They, they have to go through all the courses that cover all the biology, not just the little piece that they're tested on for ninety minutes. So it's everything. We are really cover everything in our teacher education program. And if we continue to do that, quality will not be compromised. I can assure you that. Thank you so much.
And I guess that's part, part of what we do too, is approve the programs that.
Does part of it.
And set the standard.
And yes.
And set the standards.
Oh, and set the standards.
Ship the state and cake national.
So we still have that part of the process.
And you've held us accountable.
Exactly.
And I think that's a big piece that, that we're not afraid of, you know? And, and that's what I, I'm so glad to hear this, this topic of quality over and over and over again, because. because, you know, I mean, I speak as a dean of education, but I'm also the mom of two kids and I own public schools, and I want the best teacher for them in their schools, so. The accountability piece, I think, is important.
Every child deserves a teacher.
Are there questions on any of the other slides, or do we go through?
It's a big day for me.
Let's clarify while Dr. Peacock is sitting there though. Recommendation, we've had the general discussion. The task where somebody asked us, is the work done, or something?
That was me.
There is another meeting, they have another meeting set in a couple of months. And may, so there may be some further recommendations, but this is a big chunk of it. And then we'll start our retention group. I've made some good notes from Mr. Mark up here. We would, Dr. Purcell, let me say this, let's, so the recommendation is, for that next month's meeting, we would propose a change to the code, the administrative code, to accept these changes into our pro, testing program. Now y'all know that takes two votes, so we would have a proposal next month that you would vote on. It'd be a 45-day review process, and then you could finalize it at the June meeting with a second vote. It would be open for public comment, obviously, and the time in between. Our time of implementing this, Jim, I probably missed that. Dr. Meyer, are you about to say, or? Is it implement for this fall, for the students who have been coming for this fall? I thought that's right. And so if we get off of that schedule at all, that, that's a pretty tight timeline for these higher ed folks, that we would not be finalizing this till around June 14th, and they would have students coming on campus, it would apply to in August, I guess. We could, we could also, as you know, do it as, to, do an emergency rule that would be applicable immediately next month, to just make it clear that we, for this, for one, starting this fall, this is what we're gonna do. But again, I guess my thinking is, we wanna kinda, I wanna feel everybody's headed that way. You never want to adopt an emergency rule and then not make it permanent, because that just throws everybody into chaos. So, but that is our plan right now, is that we would at least do the permanent rule process starting next month. Because if we wait till May, we're pushing this off till, to July. And we might do, we might, we'll talk about doing an emergency rule that would accompany it, so that would be clear, they could go ahead and notify their students, the, the emergency rule's passed, so it'd definitely be applicable this fall. Just keep that in mind.
Clarity, next month, at the work session, will we present the temporary rule to discuss, or will it come on the board agenda?
Come on the board agenda. It's in here, the resolution is actually in here. With, next month, we would announce the intent to adopt it as a permanent rule, and then vote two months after that, after the 45-day waiting period.
Yes. One other thing to keep in mind, we have students right now who, they have to wait so long after they don't pass a praxis before they can take it again. So we've got kids that are waiting to possibly sign up, you know? But, so there's that piece of it, the students and the cost and that kind of thing. The other piece is, after, after this discussion, gosh, however many weeks ago, I went back to my certification officer and I said, let's kind of run the numbers on how many students that that would affect for this fall. In our case, it's approximately 50 extra interns that we would have this fall. And that's 50 placements that I also have to find too. So, excuse me, so that has an impact on our P-12 partners as well. So that's just something else that I wanted to throw out there that might not be-
So in other words, we could have, we could have the intent and the emergency adoption.
Next month.
And I think that actually, from looking at faces, that would actually, in what you said-
That would give us more time to find places.
Yeah, and I think that's actually the route, if everybody feels confident in it, it seems like that's the route to take.
Done for salt.
Yeah, I would just, I agree with the, the question I was gonna ask about the timetable, because I do have graduates coming out, we do want to address the problem in the fall. I think that's a great approach, just as you suggested, Stephanie, Dr. Bell, or Ms. Bell.
That was just Stephanie.
And Eric, I was also just gonna mention too, that I thought it was so, such a collegial experience for all of us that participated in this meeting. It was listening, it was great listening, and I think the thought processes that came about it, there was a lot of good dialogue, and I was real excited about being a part of it. And this is really how higher ed and KEP work together, and I'm excited for more opportunities.
I agree with that completely. Dr. Purcell was great to work with, Robin McGill, he brought a whole team on board too, and it's, it's good. We'll, we're, we'll have more, so just-
Hold on to your hat.
I know, one, I, I was, I don't know where I had been, it was a long day, and I texted him and said, can I come over now? He said, yes, come on, it was like 7:00 at night. So he and Chuck and I met in his office on a different topic, but he's always very open. Thanks, Jim.
Great, uh, great work.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all.
So we, I knew this was gonna be a big topic, a huge thing. So this is, that is your superintendent's update. So we, we covered everything else this morning, so our board member questions. And I'll mention this, we retreat the courses in two weeks, two weeks from yesterday, finalizing that agenda. I know you've been working with Mr. Mark on that, and Ms. West has. Feel good about that, everybody's planning to be here 10:00 in the morning, we will. And we'll get an agenda out, he's working on that, and I know they're, they're finalizing it. But start at 10:00 in the morning. I will be, just so you know, I hope it doesn't make any difference, but that is our national meeting for state chiefs and the National Association of State Boards of Education that weekend. And so the meeting actually ends on the Wednesday of our retreat. I'm, I'm, I will be at the retreat. So I've changed my plans, I'm gonna leave a day early, and I'll be here. But that means that, like, the Saturday, from Saturday till Tuesday night, I'll be in Washington. And I'll be kind of flying in. So I've told Mr. Mark on that, and he's prepared, and he'll be making sure everything's done. And obviously, I'll be on the phone with you all and anybody else. But it'll be a little more unusual, I would normally not be out like the day before, but I wish we had changed the retreat date, because, one, I had COVID and other things. But just know that, that it's 10th to 30th, start 10:00, feel good about that.
May I make one request for the retreat? In the past, at all of the original retreats and meetings that we have for the new board members, and actually, it's been some time since this has been taken, if we could have all of us a copy of the Alabama Code dealing with education and just provide it to us, you don't have to have a discussion or anything like that, but I think it's helpful for all of us to be able just to go to the code, and you'll, you know, self-explanatory, but if you don't have a copy, and it makes a difference. And I'm, I haven't seen that anyone has received one anytime recently, is that the case? Do you have, because I have, I have several.
Yeah, that's the highlight, it's not everything, but it's just like the, the most used portions of the code are in little-
Are in our- I know that, but I'm talking about the actual code, because how can you function if you don't have a copy of the code? And yes, it has been revised, but I have at least two or three copies at home, but I think it's helpful.
And you can also online too.
And you can, but who puts online? I mean, if you have it handy, you can pull it down. I mean, I do, but what I'm trying to say is that it's actually kind of nice to have a book on your shelf. And it's, I think it's not something that, we, if they did it in the past, they can probably do it now.
Well, and to, to second, I mean, I agree fully with what you're saying. It might also be nice to have, because I have to go back and dig it up every once in a while, where in state law, it says what our responsibility is.
I think that's in, that should be also here.
It should be that it's nice to have it front and center, because sometimes, you know, it, I can forget sometimes.
Well, a lot of people forget.
And so it's nice to have it front and center, to know that, you know, this is why we're here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be glad to get you.
And everybody wants to do our jobs, and so it's kind of nice to know what our jobs, but, you know, we, we have a constitutional role in the state of Alabama, and everyone wants to do it. And then you wonder why test scores are down, because you don't let the body that was constitutionally challenged to do and directed to do the job, not let them do the job. And then you have layers, and that's how you end up with problems with the literacy act that may have so many benefits, but then when those little areas that conflict are there, I, I just think it would be, they've done it in the past, I have copies.
Sure.
You know, I think it's-
What the responsibilities of the board are and the-
Yeah, but that's minimal, that's okay, that's not bad.
We'll be glad to get you.
But I think the code is-
I think it's sure, that part.
Yeah, so much of the measures, it is in there, it's not the complete code, but it's just a member responsibility to the state board.
But the code is about this bit.
So let me remind you too, or remind you, I don't think any of you have meetings. I don't think they're meeting with any board members next week. I know our PCG group, they've had calls with some of you. So they were supposed to do their last in-person visit in, I don't know, January or something. So also in that time, when there was an Omicron outbreak, and they postponed it. So they're doing that next week. So just so you know, if you call next week, they're coming in on, the whole team on Tuesday afternoon. We're doing, and they'll mostly have a small group meeting. So they'll be meeting with ARI, they'll be meeting with instruction, they'll be meeting, but we do have one, have two big group meetings. I think we're meeting on Tuesday afternoon for two hours with our whole, you know, all of our assistant superintendents and directors, it could be a pretty big group in this room, and their team. And then there's an exit meeting on Thursday morning. The Thursday morning one's a little bit, it's, it's running just a jam of a bit, because I have to be with the governor down at Hyundai Thursday morning, so I won't be here. And, and some of our other staff have to be with me, I think Jimmy Hall and several people. So they're gonna do it with whoever can come. Obviously, again, the original plan was they would be earlier, and we had planned everything around it, but they had to postpone. They are presenting, so the report we sent you back in December was the most recent report they've made to the legislature. We love the report, because it shows we're completing all these tasks. But they have been asked to present to a legislative, it's, it's like several people from House and Senate Policy Committee on Wednesday afternoon. It should be online, I don't have a room number or any of that yet, but I think it's, I think they're presenting like 2:30 to 4:30.
Will that be an open?
It'll be an open meeting.
Open meeting?
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, next Wednesday, I think it's the 17th, is that right? I think it's 17th. 16th. So that will, we'll send you the exact, I don't have the room number and all that. That happened, that actually was a change that happened last night, because we were, they were supposed to be meeting with us during that two hours, and said, we can't do it, because that's the only time the legislature can, they want to do a discussion. So anyway, we feel really good about that, but I wanted you to know, they're coming for their last, should be their last in-person meeting, that contract expires in May, and unless, you know, the contract can be extended. But there's not been any talk about that, there's no, you know, that's a line item in the budget. It's not, it's gone now, the line item's not in the budget anymore, so the money department's not there. But I want you to know that's coming next week. We'll send you the exact time and the room number and all that, and I don't, I'm sure it's an open meeting, but I don't know for sure if it's gonna be streamed, I don't know what room it's gonna be in. My assumption is that it will be, but we'll find all that out for you. So that's coming next week, the week after is, I think, is the legislative spring break. We are still meeting that week, we have, I mean, we're still working that week. We, obviously, I've got a lot of folks taking spring break that week. I'm working, because we actually have a big project we're trying to get complete, and I said it'd be easiest to do it during spring break, when other people are gone. And then the week after, well, at the end of spring break, is when I'll be flying to Washington, and I'll be there and then come back to the retreat. So the rest of the month's pretty busy, but that's, you know, that's okay. Okay, other thing I want to mention, coming in May, if you will plan, there are two things going on in, around the May board meeting. So we are going back to having, and I know we're far out, but I like to get things on your calendar, we're going back to the old schedule of recognizing teacher of the year. So we'll have that big reception the evening before. So you'll go ahead and plan to come down on Wednesday afternoon before the May meeting, and we will do that. One of you, I do not know which one, I would ask to go to kind of mark off Friday, May 20th, because the car, you know, the winner for teacher of the year gets a car provided by Alpha. Alpha has a conflict that whole week of the board meeting, so they are not gonna do the car presentation on the morning of the meeting like we normally do. And so they're, we're scheduling it for Friday, May 20th. I do not know which board member will be, it'll be your teacher, but if you kind of go ahead and pencil in, that if you have the winner, that's the morning we're gonna do it, and obviously, we're gonna go to their school, or the plan right now is to go to their school, since they, since it won't be on a regular meeting day. So just kind of pencil those things in, May the 9th. One more thing, if I may put on your calendar, is the class banner schools luncheon. That's on Monday, I think, May the 9th.
So that week is a busy week.
The class banner schools luncheon, that's all that week. So Monday's the class banner schools luncheon, it is impractical again, I think. Wednesday, teacher of the year, Thursday, board meeting. I think that's all that week, second week of May. And that's why I'm, I know that's, that's two months away, but I don't want to wait till the last minute and you get all those dates on your calendar. Because it's, things are gonna be ticking really fast over the next few weeks. So I think those are all my updates and general announcements.
Dr. Mackey, I noticed the agenda that I got in advance was different than the agenda I had today. And I know we're not permit, this body's not permitted to be executive session, but did that individual withdraw, or are we just holding that consideration?
So we're gonna, what I'd like to do, maybe the day of the retreat, if we have time, if not, next month's work session, to generally talk about kind of how I see reorganizing. I had several questions in the last two or three days, it just made sense to, to talk about that position in a work session before we move forward. So no, he's still our interim, Dr. Payne, I talked to him this morning, said it's not you, there's nothing against you, keep doing the work, but we need to have a general discussion about that position. And then obviously, he moves up, that opens a position, how would we feel that? And, and with that, well, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about how, the, what we're doing with certification and preparation. Dr. Meyer's position's open for the first time in a very long time. And we're also, we're talking about that, we have actually a meeting, Dr. Kenny and her colleagues, I don't know if it's all the deans or just the executive committee, but agreed to him on April 1st, I think, to talk about kind of what they see and would like to have, you know, like to see in, in certification, not just in a person, not, obviously not gonna come and say, hey, we want so-and-so, but obviously, this is a time to think about, what does all of that look like? And we want to take time to talk to the deans, so that's why it might be March 30th, but since I'm not even gonna meet with the deans until after that, I might just wait to the April work session and have that general discussion about kind of both of those positions and how we see some things moving, and then, and then, you know, not do anything, I'm told, later in the spring on that. Good question, Dr. Els.
Board member questions?
I asked a lot of questions with them, I loved it, because the deans got to answer some questions, but-
I loved it too.
I know, you were, you didn't get to, get past slide nine.
I've got a follow-up question to what you were just mentioning. With certification, several years ago, we hired Lean Frog. Brandon was a part of it at the time, and oversaw a lot of that work, and they came in with some spectacular recommendations. And we wanted to go forward with those, but it was a matter of, sometimes it was RFPs and, you know, legal issues that we all understood that we needed to do. But will, has that process almost been completed? Have we been- Have we been able to automate and?
Yes, and I will, Ms. Martin may be able to answer a little more on it. I, it's, a part of it is complete. A part of it, we would like to keep going. I think we want to go further than even the original vision. Let the online certification portal, yes. Though we, it's run through, what do they call it? Beta. It works, several people were using it. But then we also found some tweaks we needed to make. Want to make sure it's secure, obviously. Ms. Martin, is there more? Can you talk about that? Do you want to come around or just address it there? And I think we may, one of the things may be to bring up, really what I want to do is actually get in and show you the process like we can go through and do the prepared data. That makes a question.
Exactly. Dr. Mackey, you're absolutely correct. We started the process. We took it through all of the various testing and it was sitting out there in beta. As users were utilizing it, we experienced some pushbacks from it, some unintended consequences. And the first application that we pushed out was that application for reciprocity because that was the one that we were getting a lot of questions in, saying that Alabama had extra measures. And we started our test on our second one. At, while we were doing this, we also had our work group looking at some things that we needed to change. Being that we're working with a vendor, there were some updates and some maintenance, so we had to go in and put it back down. It should be, if it's not up now, it's expected to be up tomorrow with some more changes. But it's going to be a revolving process. We're taking one application at a time. We'll test it and we'll push it out there. As we're making those changes, we're making certain that it's visible in that portal. It's really great. It's for the web payment system that's online. Everything is wonderful with it. I was very pleased with what I saw. But we just experienced some glitches from the user standpoint that we couldn't see because we all had passwords to log in.
I had one of the beta groups, we were, we were actually talking about something else, but shared with me how well, how much better the process was going to be once this was, you know, applied all over the states. And that they were very pleased with the, the direction that it was headed in. Also did say that there were some things that, you know, some challenges. But I didn't realize that it was being beta tested. So I was excited to hear that.
Right, once we actually pushed it out, we did our testing internally and then we pushed it out for some actual users to start using it. And then we figured, we had those glitches that came along. So then from there, we found some districts to actually pilot it for us to go and see what it looked like in there.
Well, I'm glad you did that because there wasn't, there couldn't have been anything worse than having it go out statewide and then have everyone experiencing such problems.
Exactly, we'll be more on that.
But thank you, I'm looking forward to hearing more.
We talked a little bit this morning, but can you explain one more time to me MTSS, what those letters stand for?
Multi-tier systems support.
And how broadly has that been implemented across?
It's in a pilot stage. This morning was what we were explaining. There were some districts, it was either six or seven. I can't remember the exact number right now. Plus one school here in Montgomery that's actually going through our pilot. And it's a five-year approach that we're going to roll out and add on as we're going. The framework that we showed you for data analysis is a part of that work. And we're going to use that with all districts.
And it's on our trade agenda. Just so you know, I had placed it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're excited to have an administrator that's here at the department that's going to lead that work and has already started going out and having those communications with districts.
I might switch gears again.
It's okay. I'll just grab the.
I get, you know, feedback questions.
It's no problem. It's no problem.
Okay, ATOP, our teacher evaluation system. I think when Dr. Boyd was over it and y'all were developing it, and part of it was in compliance with federal law, that we were supposed to do this. But, and y'all have come up, you know, with a, like, the minimum. But I did have one principal, well, she's a principal, stress to me that Cynthia, this is the minimum. And she said she's not sure that all schools are getting that information. She said that it's, that ATOP is just the, it's the minimum that they have to do for a teacher evaluation. That it was intended that local school systems add to this and individualize it. And she said, I'm not sure that all my principals are hearing this. And this may be something more for Vic Wilson to get out, right? I don't know.
No, we were actually having those conversations as well. The ATOP is Alabama Teacher Observation Program per se. And that's just the observation tool itself. And we had some confusion surrounding having the ATOT and the ATOP. So we got together and we changed the name.
Definitely.
We changed the name. It's now called the Alabama Teacher Growth Program. And that will be our pretty much evaluation system. And that observation tool that a principal was speaking about, it's just one component of that. And remember, districts can develop their own evaluation system and they're free to do that. But we are supplying the one that really focuses on growing our teachers. And we're working to have that manual pushed out. The minimum criteria that we have for right now is actually what you're saying, meeting the federal requirements. Being able to report the data that is required for effectiveness, teacher effectiveness. And this is a soft rollout. And the reason that it is a soft rollout this spring is to make certain that districts and schools are comfortable with this tool. And also, it gives us the opportunity to go in and have some data that we are able to test to make certain it meets the requirement of United States Department of Education. We go into full implementation beginning fall of '22. So we're only testing, and the only thing that we're asking them to do is just one observation. We, we're observing teachers anyway. So 20-minute tool that you go in there and you're able to do it on an online platform. And the information comes straight back. If you go ahead and hit submit the next morning, your teacher will actually have the results. Or you can do a pause and just print it out and go in and have that dialogue with the teachers. We've done regional roadshows for this tool and the feedback has been great, to the point that we've also done separate training opportunities for districts. If you call us, we're going to meet your need. We have multiple trainings, trainers across the state, our OSI team members. We make certain that we got every one of them trained. So they're also hosting training sites. So if your district or your school needs some extra training, just call us. We're going to make certain we support because we want to make certain the great trainings that are being offered to the schools, they're increased based on feedback from the participants. If there's anything we're missing, we're here to give it to them.
Do you do it through the in-service centers?
That's a part of, we have them trained as well, yes. We do it through the in-service centers. We also do it to the school districts. And we've had some host sites as well that scattered around. School districts, like a gymnasium, wherever they want to have it and so on, to pull it together, we're here to do it.
Great. I wanted everybody to know that you're offering support and training.
Oh, yes, definitely.
And in lots of multiple, different ways.
Yes, ma'am.
In times and places.
And one of the big changes is, as Ms. Martin just said, so I don't mean that the library, but we're, they have to observe every teacher every year. In our old systems, previously, of course, PEPs, that ages me, but that's where I was. We require multiple, in fact, multiple observations, but a teacher only had to be observed every third year. And so you'd spread it out. But when, under the federal guidelines, we had to observe every teacher every year, we went back to only one per year required because that's a lot of observations if you're in a school and don't have an assistant principal. But to your colleague's point, whoever talked to you, I mean, if I were, if I were a principal and that was the only 20 minutes I was in a teacher's classroom, I would consider that subpar. I mean, you've got to be doing other instructional walkthroughs. They're allowed to do that. They, they use this tool more than once. There's no additional cost if they use it two or three times a year. If I were a principal, when I was a principal, Ms. Ziegler's been there, I would, I mean, they would, like, I would have certain teachers, I might do, be in their room two or three times a year. So I'd have some teachers that I'm, that I'm just doing the minimum because I know that I don't have to go and do an observation them multiple times because you know their data and you know what's going on. But please, yes, it's been the training to get to this new idea, the understanding. And of course, you always get asked a question because principals, and I'll swear to be one, but principals can be like eighth graders. What's the minimum I have to do? How many words does an essay have to be? But that doesn't mean that that's always sufficient. And I think you're, what you're saying is that there, people don't need to get the message that the minimum's okay.
20 minutes, yes.
Right.
Right, and we're actually telling them that in the trainings, because I made some caveat for those principals that know that they have teachers, that they need to be in their room multiple times. So the way that we're going to capture the data for those different teachers, we're going to have a window at the end of May and we'll just take that last observation and pull that. So if you had to go into Angela's class four times in order to get me the growth as needed to prescribe the professional development, we won't touch those first three. We're only take that last two, yes. So that was our way to protect, to make certain that they won't worry about me going back pulling data from September. So we're just going to get, we've given them a window, our vendor, of when we want to pull data from the system.
Okay, we mentioned like contracts ending. Barstow, when we've got the contract review, I noticed that their, Barstow Institute is visiting our schools.
For the reading.
For the reading, right, yeah. This is just, just on reading, as I understand it. And that their contract is, is complete March 31st. So will we get a report back of their findings and when? Because I don't want to do it when they're beyond their contract and they say they can't come.
Dr. Mackey, one individual reached out in reference to an extension. Is that the email?
It may be. I'm, I'll have to look, I don't know for sure. I have an email from Dr. Butler, Kelly Butler, is the head of Barstow. And I flagged it and haven't read it, but it's a, came in late yesterday. It is an update on where they are on that. But I think they are looking at whether they may have to extend a little bit. So we'll, we'll figure that out. Well, yeah, absolutely, you're going to get a report on that. It's, it has been more difficult, obviously, than they thought because of COVID, getting into the institutions. And as you know, we required them to go into all 26 institutions. They don't even have, they don't have staff to do that. In Mississippi, they only did like three and they, and it's based at University of Mississippi. So they, she had to hire people from all over America. Literally, she could not get enough people from Alabama and Mississippi to do the work and had to hire people. And so they've done, it's just been more difficult to get it. If we need to extend it with them, we're not going to, we're not going to let them just drop. And they don't want to just drop Mississippi, so we'll get that. But I don't know when the exact, when we're going to get their final report. I know they've been doing follow-up meetings with deans, Dean Kenny or Dean Fairbrother, Michael Numble back, and I do. There's, and just to mention it, you know, you asked a question, Dr. Card, then I have to set you up for the next question. But if the Literacy Act passes, it includes a section that requires something similar to Barstow. But to our knowledge, and we've already been looking, there is not an equivalent to Barstow that does math. So we're probably going to have to kind of create a process. We may work with, you know, I don't know, because they'd be going into institutions of higher ed. So can the institutions help us design something? But that's what we're thinking. But we probably, we'll have to do something that would do that same thing. Kind of go in and look at what those elementary math preparation programs look like. There's a whole task force on post-secondary that's created and there are like 29 components that the institutions of higher ed have to adhere to. And it doesn't, that piece doesn't go into effect until in this next year. But just know that, that's a, I'm anticipating your next question, or maybe not the next one. But there is a, there's kind of an equivalent math getting into the higher ed institutions. Why are they doing it in math preparation? It's just, there's not an institute out there like Barstow that we've been able to find so far that does math.
Well, that's actually, you, by asking your questions, you, you sort of answered a question I had in reading the Literacy Act as proposed. Is that part about the consultant and it's in there, the contract? You have to have a contract. What you're referring to as far as the overall, the follow-up, it's in there. But, but it, yeah, and that's what you, I assume, were referring to?
It may be, it may be. I don't, I didn't know if it used the word consultant, but yes, we have to. There's a, there's a post-secondary, there's a, there's an elementary math task force established.
But you have to wonder who that third party is. And that's what, you know, the question is not really answered and it's not defined very well. And that's why, you know, you throw up your hands and you start going online trying to find out what are they talking about? And it's, it's not there. So what you just said confirmed my experience.
I don't know anybody that does. Now, Barstow, we found, well, I think some of those components are just, they overlap. They, I mean, they overlap. Barstow is, I mean, it is a reading institute at the University of Mississippi. That's what they do.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Right, we just, I don't, we don't know of a, of a similar organization or institute that does math.
Somebody must know it's one, otherwise they wouldn't have put it in here. It's just sort of, I know you're smiling.
I understand. I know, I don't know if I tell you.
I was just smiling. I was thinking, so what in the world are they referring to? And it's not going to be cheap. And is it worth it? And, you know, what are they planning to do with it when they get it? And we'll put on the shelf, but also what's purpose? It is a lot of money. If you can grow your own perhaps, but that's not mentioned specifically either. But, sorry, I finished hijacking.
They mentioned, anyway.
If I could jump back to reading.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. The news is always definitely, you know, being talked about. So, so I appreciate that. But like, in the Literacy Act, we'll go to that. And in the current version, and I believe in the one that's suggested as an amendment, it's, or it may be our code. I'm not exactly sure, but it's probably part of what came out of Literacy Act. It's, there's word, there's verbiage that says that IDA accredits dyslexia-specific training as approved by the board, I believe. But it's supposed to be, I, right now, it reads IDA, which is International Dyslexia Association. But there's also another group out there called ENSLE. I, international, I don't.
Yes, Sonia's here.
So do you know what ENSLE stands for?
Sure. International Multisensory Structured Language Education something.
Well, but they seem to be a very high-quality body as well, from what I understand. And that's coming from task force members, Dyslexia Advisory Council members, and all sorts of members. So I guess the suggestion would be, could we add, could we have both of those as accrediting, that, you know, has to be, one of those has to accredit it for us to consider it. And so could we add ENSLE, which we now know what is, to, to broaden the amount of intervention curriculum that we then are able to approve? It should allow more options.
Yeah, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
I'm sorry, but ENSLE only approves training programs for dyslexia therapy.
Okay, okay.
So it's not really, IDA approves both curriculum and training programs, but ENSLE, it's the ones that sets the, for the count.
Okay.
The requirements for that training.
So the, so they don't have to handle curriculum?
I don't.
So they just do training?
They just, they accredit the training. There are specific ones that are accredited that you can go through.
So it could be ENSLE would accredit the training or IDA would accredit the training?
Now, if you get a count, ENSLE has to, now, if I think I'm right on that. So, you know, there are multiple count pathways. We have MSLE, there's, uh, I don't know, there's multiple. But ENSLEC has to accredit all of those pathways to become COUT certified.
Okay.
I don't know if they do any curriculum. I think what Sonia said is they don't do curriculum also, like IDA does.
Okay, so, so if we, I think our goal is to have, like, the memo that we sent out last year was like 30 spots, I think, to try to get, we were paying for scholarships or roughly 30.
For COUT.
For COUT, sorry.
Yes.
COUT.
Not COUT.
Um, which is Certified Academic Language Therapist.
Well, look at you now.
You learn, even old people can learn.
Yeah, older, older than you are.
But anyway, um, and, and so I suppose to encourage and support more of those who are interested in doing that and to serve our schools and our students in reading, then we would want them to be ENSLEC accredited, is that right?
Yes, we would not want a COUT pathway that was not ENSLEC accredited.
Okay, so if we don't currently have that in our code, well, I guess my question would be, can we look into that to see if we have that? And if we don't, could we have a recommendation to change it?
So.
I don't want to send them down a path that is not going to lead to that.
No, I don't think there is a COUT pathway that's not ENSLEC accredited. Is, do you know, Sonia, is there?
Not that it's being offered in Alabama right now. I think that the concern came with the wording from IDA and then ENSLEC because IDA, some of their training programs are not accredited by ENSLEC.
Yeah, we can work on that, but, but they would not get a COUT. So if they finished another program that was not ENSLEC accredited, they would not get the Certified Academic Language Therapist.
And we don't want to disappoint them, excuse me, or surprise them and have them go down this pathway and then say, oh, no, you can't sit for this.
Absolutely, we don't want anybody to think they're becoming a COUT and they're not.
Right, right, so I just want to make sure, you know, full transparency and that we, and, and the wording, I'm sorry, I, I totally bombed on that, but, um, but, but if we could look into that to make sure that, that it has the appropriate accreditation as needed for them to do that.
I think I, I think I've got that now. So we want to look at and whether we need to codify it, but we don't want people to think they're working toward getting a COUT. They're in a, maybe in a PD pro, program, but it is not a program that will lead them to getting that COUT stipend. We want to make sure they know they have to be in an ENSLEC certified program to be on the COUT pathway. Let me dig deeper. We'll probably, well, I'll talk to Bonnie and we'll, we'll give them the task force, we'll make sure, yeah. But we don't want anybody to be misled, but I think they would, I mean, I'm not saying they couldn't do that. You know, it'd be like somebody I've known, people that enrolled in a college before thinking they were getting a degree that would lead to teaching and it didn't because it wasn't an accredited college. So it could happen, could, that could happen out there. We've not heard, let me ask you this, if you know of a specific, or somebody says, I know where there's some teachers over here in a pathway, they think they're going to get COUT, but you need to look into it, please let us know because we'll look into it.
Well, it gets confusing because there's MSLE, then there's Orton-Gillingham, then there's, I mean, there's so many different, and I get confused about it. And so I just want to make sure that we're as clear as we can be about what's accredited, what's not, what's. And then we, the board, I think, have to approve it. And I want to make sure before I vote that I know, you know, that I'm approving quality. I mean, I think all today we enforce the quality piece. And so we want to make sure that what we approve, what we vote on, is of high quality.
Yeah, well, let us follow up. Here comes Bonnie and she's placed a follow-up there.
Are you talking about including our DAC or?
Sure, sure.
Whatever input that they would provide because, you know, they're in the trenches as well.
No question.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, they're a good source of information, so.
And Dr. Mackey, I did get clarification, they did ask for an extension because they were not able to go into all 26 of the IHEs. So they, as of right now, the tentative report, um, they were looking at June 2nd.
Okay. Well, I, I'd read my email back then and what, it's actually an email to the deans, I'm just copied on it, saying that they're sending out the surveys for just recent completers or something. So they're all shaking their heads, they know more than I.
I think they were having some trouble just because different spring breaks and all of that, so.
I just didn't want to miss them, like, if their deadline, if they were going to be out of here by March 31st, I thought, gosh, we need to schedule something, you know, pretty soon, because when they're gone, it, you know, contracts are over, so.
They emailed and explained extension.
Okay, great.
And we'll get on the bottom of this, so we'll make sure we've got it right and we'll, we'll follow up. Sorry to have gotten you off of reading straight into the numeracy, I just wanted to.
Oh, no, that was.
No, there, we'll get, that passes, we'll get, we'll, we'll, we'll dig into it. It's pretty long, so, and you know, there's a new sub out this week that's different from the sub we had Monday, so. It's a week, it's, um, you know, still changing. You almost can't, you have to be thinking ahead, but you can't really start formulating rules and things until you get a version that you know is the one that you're going to have to work on.
And one last question, dyslexia learning labs. I know we set those up and, I mean, I was super excited, you know, um, have two in my district. What, like, are, do they host PD? I guess what is their function and when can I go visit?
So the dyslexia learning labs were Sunday system specific. So that program was primarily the program that was used in all the dyslexia learning lab schools. I was one of those schools when I was a principal, so I know the program well. And, um, I thought it was a, I thought it was great to be able to invite others into the schools to be able to see what is taking place in those different schools. You can exchange ideas, it's principals, it's reading coaches, it's lead teachers. So it was a really great, um, way to involve and encourage others to extend in their own schools. And so we're currently working on some, um, protocols and information to, um, look at something similar. Right now, all of our schools should be dyslexia learning labs because they all should have a dyslexia-specific program and have noted that to us. So we know all of them have identified a program. We sure hope all of them are utilizing those programs with the students that they're supposed to, that have that consistent efficiency. Um, but we're looking to identify those schools that are really, um, standing out above and beyond, doing science of reading practices, utilizing the strategies that they've been taught so that we can, um, make that list in different areas, different regions, different board regions, and, um, work to support a plan for next school year where we would encourage those school visits.
Okay, well, thank you.
I think it's kind of down because of COVID.
Okay.
And so we're looking for a way to maybe just make it a little bit bigger. And, um, we're a little further than we were when we started those dyslexia learning labs.
My goodness, that's a good word, your word, our literacy task force, our DAC. We, we've come a long way here, four years. Good people.
Any more questions?
Well, I'm going to make one more announcement, just tomorrow, I don't know how many, I know some of you are going to the Parker meeting tomorrow. I know some of you were going and had to back out. But they do have, I mean, there are additional seats. I've had multiple folks call us in the last two days and say, look, I can't fill my table, do you want to send anymore people? So if somebody wants to go and you didn't, you thought the deadline had passed, there's, there's definitely an opportunity. I'm going up this evening, we're having a pre-meeting, get ready for tomorrow, because I'm on a panel. Bonnie's on a panel, Sandy, Sandy Ledwell's on the panel, Cassandra.
Miller.
Miller, who's one who, I used to be here and is now with Water Soakers, is one of the presenters. So we'll have a lot of connections to the department, we're, you know, excited about it. But just know that's, that's tomorrow morning at some point.
May 45.
The governor speaks at lunch.
But it's, but there are opportunities if anybody wanted to, so that's it.
All right, thank you all so much. See you next Saturday.